Good evening, everyone. If I could ask you to please find a seat. That way we can get started with our meeting and our recognitions. We have a lot of people coming into the auditorium, so if you can all bear with us. If you could hear the sound of my voice, clap once. If you could hear the sound of my voice, clap twice. If you could hear the sound of my voice, give me three, please. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez-Gomez. Good evening, everyone. We are going to get started. Welcome to the September 2024 Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for being here with an emphasis on the "all" because I had no idea there would be this many of you. If you are joining us this evening to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please use the sign-up sheets located right in front on the podium. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 5, 2024, which is the annual notice. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of devices necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and two republics, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Good, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley.
Here.
Ms. Catamatory.
Here.
Ms. Delira. Mr. Delatorre. Mr. Grana.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Cluffell.
Here.
Ms. Norwood.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Good. We are going to begin our meeting this evening with a recognition ceremony for our students who participated in the International Schools Academic Olympiad, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez-Gomez to present the recognitions.
This is a very exciting evening. Last academic year and during the week of Monday, March 11th, Johns Hopkins CTY students in grades 2 through 8 throughout the district participated in the International Olympiad's global academic competition. The International Schools Olympiad is a distinguished competition that brings together brilliant young minds from around the world, offering them the opportunity to showcase their talents across various disciplines, including mathematics, science, English, reasoning, and general knowledge. It is designed to encourage critical thinking, problem-solving, and a passion for learning in a fun and challenging manner. Our CTY students were able to showcase their knowledge and skills in the above-mentioned subject areas. The engagement process provided our students with international accolades and recognitions. We are proud to honor our students who excelled tremendously on these assessments, earning a total of 129 medals, 117 of them being medals of excellence and 12 being medals of international distinction. Their outstanding achievements are a testament not only to their hard work and dedication, but also to our district's commitment to fostering and empowering gifted children. At this time, I would like to be joined at the podium by our Supervisor of English Language Arts, Ms. Gaudio, and the Principal of Brandt, the school, to go first. We will follow with the Principals of Connors, Wallace, and Hoboken Middle School. Students will be called up. Their recognition will be shared, and they will remain by the stage for a group school picture. After the individual schools are done, I will call up those students receiving the medals of distinction at the international level and ask that Principal Sorfine remain to help with those medal distributions for the final group. And here we go. I would like Aiden Pichard to come up to receive silver in math and bronze in science. Alex Wang receiving silver in English, bronze for reasoning. Alexandra Montageli receiving bronze in English and gold in science. That's the way you come up and get a medal. Next, I would like to see Anna Otero receiving silver in math and bronze in reasoning. Next, Gabriel Yunen, gold in English. Martin Petrokov, silver in math. Mira Padmanaban, silver, English. Salome, bronze, English. Okay? Thank you, brother. Arav Ragavan, silver, English, bronze, science. Anika Naik, bronze, math. Benji Anter, bronze for math. Martin Lamere, bronze, English. Mina Wu, gold, English. Nicholas Zayas receiving three. Gold, English, silver, math, bronze for science. Avery Sliger, silver, math. Emeka Fuji, bronze, English, bronze, reasoning. Gael Pasqual, bronze, English. Isabella Li, gold, English. Madison Johnson, silver, English. Maria Otero, bronze, English, bronze, math. Mason Strugo, bronze, English, gold, math. Mason? Mudra Hari, bronze, English, bronze, math. Patrick Mahat, English, silver. Sebastian Su, bronze, math, bronze, reasoning. Tomar Sagal, bronze, reasoning. Victor Sabao, silver, math. Adele Smith, bronze, English. Ariana Marmelstein, silver, English. Connor Peng, bronze, math. Drew Tareha, gold, English. Evan Vassar, bronze, English, silver, math. James Hanna, silver, English, bronze, math. Luke May, bronze, English. Myra Gursahani, silver, math. And Vedika Dua, gold, English, bronze, math. Are there any students? Any students that arrived a little bit late? Please see... Sorry. If there are any Brand students that arrive late, please see Principal Bartlett. At this time, I would like to be joined by the Principal of Connors Elementary School, Ms. Addy. First student, Adam Chan, gold in English, bronze, math, bronze, science. Eknor Kohli, silver, English, silver, science. Anika Gupta, gold, English. Michelle Gallagher, bronze, English. Michelle Gallagher? Vincenzo Bataglia, gold, English, silver, math. Sofia Wren, silver, English, bronze, math. Eva La Bombarda, silver, English, silver, math, silver, reasoning. Bella Wong, silver, English, bronze, math. Ethan Schneidmuller, silver, English. Joey Loschiavo, silver, English, bronze, math. Lucas Fang, silver, English. Mina Tomsek, silver, English. Oliver Candilly, gold, English, gold, math. Stone Duskin, silver, English. Nicholas Picarel, bronze, English, silver, math. And lastly, Noah Renoni, silver, English. Sarah Vivek, silver, math. All right, Connors, picture time. I would now ask to be joined by the Principal of the Wallace School, Mr. Martin Shannon. All right, first for Wallace, Emmy Covedo, silver, English. Sanvi Paldel, bronze, math. Archer Atkinson, bronze, math. Delilah Francis, bronze, English. Gabrielle Solano Monje, bronze, English. Sutton Resra Chu, silver, English. Grace McMullin, bronze, math. Morgan Kohane, bronze, English. Alexander Wenck, bronze, math. And last, for Wallace, Logan Power, gold in math. Picture time for Wallace. I would ask that the Principal of Hoboken Middle School, Mr. Sorfine, join me at the microphone. I will not. Thomas Calamari, bronze, math. Tommy Anter, silver, math. Gavin Watkins, bronze, math. Raga Hari, silver, English. Adella Horn, gold, English. Nathaniel Yu, bronze, math. Soral Kulkarni, bronze, English, bronze, math. Elena Larue Dreyfus, bronze, English. Jonah Lieberman, bronze, English, bronze, math. Magnus Peterk, bronze, reasoning. Martin Shudro. Shudro, I'm sorry. Martin Shudro, bronze, English. And lastly, for the middle school, Bria Wong, bronze, English. Pardon me, not last. Bria also gets a bronze for reasoning. Samuel Decker, bronze for general knowledge. Violetta Martin, silver, English. And last, for the middle school, is Jonathan Offer, silver for math.
You may need to duck a little bit.
All right, thank you, middle school. All right, and for the final round, these are our Medals of Distinction. Principal Sorfing, please help me. Your attention, friends. Alex Wang, Gold Math. Eli Levington, Silver English. Billy Rosado, Bronze English. Emeka Fuji, Silver Math. Gael Pasqual, Silver Math. Madison Johnson, Gold Math. Tomer Sagal, Bronze Math. Roan Berger, Bronze English. Va'yun Hari, Silver English. Sophia Petrikov, Bronze Math. Lucas Fang. Lucas Fang, Bronze Math. And for the final awardee, Tristan Kim, Gold English. Pictures. Parents, thank you for everything you do to make this happen. We're very proud of them and absolutely proud of you. Thank you very much. And last round of applause for the awardees. I want to honor Chayen Genuardi with a Bronze in English. She arrived a little bit late.
Congratulations to all of the students who were recognized this evening. We are beyond proud of you and all of your efforts. Keep up the great work in this school year. We cannot wait to see what you do next. We'd like to call up Jackie Dowd and Allison Strobel on behalf of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation to talk a little bit about what the ladies at HPEF and gentlemen at HPEF have planned for this upcoming school year.
Thank you. I'm Allison Strobel, Executive Director of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, here tonight with President of HPEF's Board of Directors, Jackie Dowd. Before I address the main reason we're here tonight, I'd like to just make a quick plug for our first fundraiser of the school year, which is just days away. Our First Annual Back-to-School Community Run will take place this Sunday with nearly 600 participants and counting. We hope Hoboken residents of all ages will join us. We have courses for everyone, including a 100-meter kids' fun run, a one-mile walk-run stroll, and a timed 5K on a USA Track and Field Certified course. This event will feature entertainment by district employees, parents, and students, as well as prizes and giveaways. And participants will receive exclusive T-shirts with a fantastic design created by seven district student artists. Hope to see you on Puree for this exciting event on Sunday morning. There are postcards by the entrance of the auditorium by the agenda for tonight's meeting. Now, the primary reason we're here, we are very proud to share that Hoboken Public Education Foundation will fund over half a million dollars in new initiatives for the Hoboken Public School District in the 2024-2025 school year. This is thanks. This is thanks to the generous contribution, support, and time of district parents, local businesses, corporate sponsors, and the broader Hoboken community. The Foundation's Board has worked closely with Superintendent Dr. Johnson to identify innovative and impactful funding opportunities in the areas of STEM and experiential learning, college and career preparation, fine and performing arts, athletics, skill building for staff and families, special needs programming, and essential technology. Our annual report coming out soon will provide more detail on HPEF-funded programs and activities. And at this time, we'd like to present Superintendent Johnson and Board of Ed President McGurk with HPEF's funding for the 2024-2025 school year.
We are going to take a brief moment to let some of the families, if you'd like to leave, get out of the room so we can, make your way out of the room so we can continue the business portion of our meeting. Thank you all for coming out, and a special thanks to HPEF for the remarkable presentation tonight. All right, it is 7:42 PM, and we are going to resume the business portion of our meeting. Dr. Johnson, do you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
I do. I have a brief report. So I just want to welcome everyone back to the 2024-2025 school year. This evening's recognition was a wonderful way to kick off the start of school by honoring our students. And I look forward to the upcoming months with all of our Students of the Month that we'll be honoring as well. This school year, after all of our adds and drops kind of shook out, we welcomed 969 preschoolers, 1,617 elementary school children, 444 middle schoolers, and 658 high school students, 40 of which are from our three Hoboken Charter Schools in the city.
Freshman class.
That's the freshman class, the 40 students. We had a wonderful opening in Convocation Day, as well as a following Teacher Professional Development Day. Our staff was engaged in a lot of different professional training opportunities and had the chance to meet with their principals, with some of our content area supervisors. They also had the opportunity to meet with their associations, and that proved to be very successful. I'm also proud to say that we have a number of new courses and initiatives this year that I think throughout the year you'll hear a lot more about. But as the opening Board of Education meeting in September, I thought it was important to just report out that a portion of grant money that came in from the New Jersey Department of Education and some other sources, along with the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, has made it possible for us to offer some of these new courses and initiatives. So this year at Hoboken High School, students will see for the first time an Advanced Placement College Board course in African-American Studies, also in AP Computer Science and AP Statistics. So we're expanding our Advanced Placement offerings. We're also building upon last year's opening of the Innovation, Science, and Technology Lab, along with the Aviation Program. And so we have some new courses that will be offered this year. So we have Forces in Flight that has just started, along with an Innovation and Community Leadership Course and an Innovation Kickstarter Course. The teacher of that course, Manny Fernandez, is already working with some local business owners to get them involved and engaged in some of the course projects, and the kids seem excited about it already. We have a new course in Studies in Climate Change, Resilience, and Sustainability, as well as Innovation and Environmentalism. Those courses are linked to a grant we received of a little over $70,000 from the New Jersey Department of Education in climate change education. So those courses will be at the high school as well. And we're rolling out for the first time a new dual enrollment program in partnership with NJIT in the area of architecture. Though that program begins with a foundation of Project Lead the Way courses and ultimately makes its way up through an engineering and graphics course in Introduction to CAD, applied computer-aided design courses, all offered as dual credit, high school and college credit enrollment-type courses through NJIT. So we're excited to roll that program out as well. We have a couple new electives also, one being the Social, Political, and Economic History of Hoboken, in which the high school staff is partnering with the Hoboken Historic Museum. We also have, as a result of the HPEF's generous donation, the opening of a new college and career readiness lab. That new college and career readiness lab gives us the opportunity to offer approximately 45 different career-ready certificates for our students to go through in paths of one-year, two-year, and three-year certificate programs. And so our students will have the opportunity to leave Hoboken High School, whether to the career workforce or to the college world, holding certificates in their hands for a number of career opportunities, whether it be for a long-term career or a short-term potential part-time opportunity while they're away at college. But it's a great opportunity for them to explore different careers that they might be interested in before heading off to school or entering the workforce. We also have an elective course that's running at the high school called Screen, it's a screenwriting course, and it's based on a novel that a teacher, Sharon Melinda, at the high school worked on last year with her class. And this year, they are not only working on learning more about screenplay writing, but actually potentially producing a screenplay to present to the author of the novel. And she is very excited to receive the script from our students. We've also expanded our dual-language pilot program from just kindergarten to kindergarten and first grade. This year, we've opened 10 classrooms across the district, and we are very excited about those courses in all of our elementary schools as well. We have a new middle school advisory curriculum and program that is being rolled out for the first time this week on Wednesday. So I look forward to visiting, actually tomorrow morning, a couple of the classes to see the first lessons being unveiled. So there's a lot of new opportunities and learning experiences for our students, so we're really excited about that. This year, in addition to the recognitions and accolades we had this evening regarding the international assessment that the students took, the Olympiad Assessment, our students will continue to participate in Johns Hopkins CTY for both ELA and Mathematics. And this year, we have 192 students participating in Johns Hopkins CTY ELA courses, and we have 287 students participating in Mathematics. Also, really, really happy to say that we have opened our first twice-exceptional class at Wallace Elementary School. The twice-exceptional program is new to the district, so we're starting small with one cohort of children at Wallace. And we anticipate that that program will only continue to grow, and our goal is to learn as much as we can about twice-exceptional children and programming and make it the best we possibly can for the children that need that service. And then finally, we're rolling out a number of classrooms with trained teachers in Orton-Gillingham multi-sensory reading. Our principals are working through some of the bumps along the way in terms of scheduling students in those classes. And of course, anytime something is new, people bring up some ideas and thoughts and concerns, and we're hearing all of them. And some of them have actually caused us to kind of rethink some things, and some of them, some of the thoughts have given us the opportunity to really provide deeper and more information to parents. So those conversations have actually been pretty successful and beneficial. And the schools are working right now to continue to balance the classrooms, both with their demographic and academic footprints. And so you'll see the principals will continue to have conversations with families probably for the next few weeks in order to kind of finalize and smooth everything out. But really, the goal was to provide the highest-quality reading instruction and support that we could for all children at the elementary grade levels. And I'm really happy to say that we have trained teachers at every single grade level in every one of our elementary schools, as well as not only in the general ed field, but also in the special education space. And I think we have the ability to meet the needs of every single child that's in need of multi-sensory reading instruction at this point. So we're very, very happy about that. And then lastly, for those of you who maybe made their way, made your way to the football game the other night, I hope you sense the same level of excitement for the school year. And if it was symbolic of our athletic program and our high school community in general, I think you would say it's going to be a really exciting and spirited year, that's for sure. All of our sports and clubs are underway at all of our schools, and I'm going to have more updates on those, along with Passport to Learning, as the months come throughout the year. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your report, Dr. Johnson. We're now going to move into committee reports.
We're now going to move into committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a Business Administrator's Report this evening?
No.
Thank you so much. We'll move to the Curriculum Committee. Mr. Granja, do you have a curriculum report for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The Curriculum Committee did not meet this month. We were very busy earlier in the summer and now as we launch the school year. We only have one agenda item that we recommend for approval, which is 9.01, and that is the approval of field trips as submitted by the superintendent, and that is our report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Granja. Mr. Delatorre is not here this evening. I don't know if he passed his facilities report along to anyone. If you give me a moment, I can pull it up. There with me.
I believe he does. He did send a report. I remember at that time, there wasn't any facility requests, unless something's been added.
Okay. So there were...I have the report, Ms. Conna, and I will happily read it. There were no new requests since the last meeting. Some of the summer projects are still wrapping up. There's some new furniture and accordion doors expected at Hoboken High School. Safety surfaces at Connors and Calabro were finished in this past week. Wallace is scheduled for the beginning of October. There are some issues with the HVAC at Wallace in the gymnasium. There's a temporary HVAC unit in there now. Testing was done of the new sound system at JFK Stadium last week. There were some complaints due to the noise level, but they were testing at full intensity, and it will not be as loud during games, although if the Red Wings play like they did on Friday, get some earplugs. And it was loud, and it was great. HMS scaffolding, we're still awaiting the engineer's report, plus an additional site visit. So that will take a little bit of time, and that is all for facilities. Ms. Conna, do you have a report for finance?
Yep. Good evening. The Finance Committee met on Friday, September 6th, at 10:00 a.m. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Angley, Mr. Klupfeld, and myself. It was a very...it's a very short report. We discussed and reviewed the agenda items, and we recommend all of them for approval. And that's it.
And I'm going to take a moment to go back and amend the facilities report, because I forgot to say when the committee met, because I didn't think I would be reading their report. The committee met on Thursday, September 5th, and in attendance, and this is again for facilities, were Ms. Angley, Ms. Delara, Mr. Granja, Mr. Callagie, Dr. Johnson, and Mr. Delatorre. Next, we will move on to Governance with Ms. Katamatory.
Thank you. The Governance Committee met on Thursday, September 5th, 2024. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Klupfeld, Ms. Norwood, Ms. McGurk, and Ms. Delara. The committee discussed the agenda and recommends all agenda items for approval. As is typical throughout the year, there are a number of agenda items relating to faculty and staff, including acceptance of resignations, approval or modification of various appointments, as well as the usual items relating to training and workshops and other cleanup, all of which are detailed on the agenda, among other things. In addition, today's agenda includes the following item of note, or really, it's two items. At item numbers, agenda numbers 1021 and 1022, you will see the long-awaited settlement for a new contract and agreed-upon salary guides between the Hoboken School Employees' Association and the Board. I'm happy to say that the negotiations went very smoothly, and we were able to come up with a four-year contract that was unanimously ratified by the HSEA last week, which is why we are able to bring it here today for approval. Among other things, the contract includes salary increases starting with the previous school year through the 26, 27 school year in the following percentages: 5% for 23, 24, 5% for 24, 25, 6% for 25, 26, and 3.5% for 26, 27. As with each of the previous contracts the Board has negotiated in the past year or so, the increases for the first three years are meant to reflect our acknowledgement of our district's staff and faculty's work and sacrifice during the COVID pandemic, when we were one of the only school districts open on a full-time basis. The dedication of all of our faculty and staff played a large part in ensuring that our district and our students did not experience the learning loss that much of the country's children experienced during this time. And all of our district faculty and staff deserve to be thanked and to be proud for their part in making this possible. The Memorandum of Understanding is attached to the agenda, and we proudly recommend approval of these agenda items by the Board today. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatory. Ms. Norwood, do you have a Wellness Report this evening?
Thank you so much, Ms. Norwood. We will now go into the President's Report. I'm going to try to keep my report brief this evening. I think the Superintendent's Report and the other reports have kind of covered the bulk of everything, but I hope that everyone has had a productive first few days of the school year and are settling back into familiar routines. Since our last meeting, there has been progress on several fronts. First, as mentioned by Ms. Katamatory, on the agenda this evening includes the contract with the Hoboken Service Employees Association. I want to thank the HSEA leadership for their partnership in developing this contract. We are grateful for all your members and what they continue to contribute to the Hoboken Public School District, and we are very thankful for your efforts in getting this contract executed. Secondly, I want to say a giant congratulations, and unfortunately, they're not here anymore, and a thank you to the Hoboken Public Education Foundation for the over half a million dollars worth of initiatives they are going to be funding in our schools this year. The HPEF does amazing work, and they are constantly looking for ways to bring innovative programming and support the amazing ideas that our superintendent, principals, assistant superintendent come up with. And I know for myself, I have seen these programs in action, you know, as a board member and as a parent, so we cannot thank the HPEF enough. And secondly, a shout-out to all of the students who were recognized here this evening. I knew we were doing recognitions. I had no idea there were 129 medals to be handed out, and I think it just speaks to the quality and the excitement and all of the good things that are happening at all levels of this school district, because 129 medals across four schools, it's, to me, it's just breathtaking. Next, the Pilot Trust Account Ordinance was on the City Council Agenda for Second Reading last week on Wednesday, September 4th. So representatives from all three charter schools and myself attended that council meeting to speak in support of the ordinance. I'm pleased to report that the ordinance passed unanimously, and we thank the Mayor, Administration, and City Council for finally getting this done. Lastly, I would love to congratulate our girls volleyball team, girls soccer team, and football team for their very exciting, and might I add, winning starts to the season. I was lucky enough to be at the football game on Friday night, and I can't wait to see where the rest of the season takes this team. I was saddened that I missed the first girls soccer game of the season and the second one, which was tonight, but luckily, when Ms. Katamatory entered, she alerted us that they had won. So I would encourage everyone who loves to watch great competition to come out and watch our teams in action this season. There is just so much exciting stuff happening, and the electricity that's coming from volleyball, from soccer, and from football is something that everybody should take part in. I felt my faith in humanity was restored on Friday night at that football game. It was, it was really fun. So that's all I have for my report. We are next going to go into public comments on agenda items. And before we get started with that, a reminder before we open for public comment. Over the years and most recently, the Board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the Board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The Board does not condone, nor is the Board a party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve that speaker from liability or from any comments that could be viewed as defamatory by an employee. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the Board. Board policy requires that all speakers please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and Vice President Angley will quietly motion with 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the Chair. Board policy states that the Board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the Board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and Board members or the Superintendent. Ms. Good, do we have any speakers signed up this evening?
Ms. Waiters?
Patricia Waiters. Thank you, Business Administrator Good. I really appreciate you. You just don't know how much. I'm going to be speaking on a few agenda items, and I'm very impressed that you read that into the record every time the public portion began, because I want you to know today the importance of integrity, okay? Very important of integrity, because on December 4th, I have your picture again, Ms. McGurk, when you said Patricia Waiters allegedly got a gift, I was gifted and I didn't report it. With that being said, I have integrity. Even though this was intentional to tarnish my integrity, this is a shame. Even with you coming up today to take a picture, okay? It questions integrity. I want to say this, and I'm serious. I am sick and tired of being sick and tired. Ms. Good, I went in detail with you with this agenda today. I get here today, and this ain't transparents, and this is not integrity. I don't see the HSEA on here. It's not on here. It is not...wait, let me finish. Please, please do not interrupt me, because I'm only taking my five minutes. It's not on here, and not only is it not on here, I will be speaking on that specifically because each and every one of you, and even in the midst of an election, from 2022 to 2023, up until now, when they did a fake election to name Erica the boy president. I trusted you guys. I came to each and every one of you. And y'all know I was removed illegally, but I was told by you, Dr. Johnson, you can't have no ties or affiliation according to you, Vito. The same thing with the HSEA, okay? But it ain't over. Please believe me, it's not over. You knew, under omission laws, Mr. Gargliotti, what they did to me. And I was waiting tonight. Y'all said, oh, victory. We approved the budget. We, I mean, I'm sorry, the contract. Y'all knew my contract was limbo. Y'all knew everything that took place with me, and none of you did not do a thing. I wanted to be said, because it should be on this agenda, and I came out tonight to speak specifically on that, because I'm going to subpoena this Board, okay? After the election. I don't have a lawsuit yet, but I gave it to you in 2022, when it wasn't an election. And you allowed the HSEA, their administrator, and 27 attorneys, not one, 27, Mr. Gargliotti, okay? And you know my work, right? That too. I'm gonna let that go. Now on here, Chris Munoz, and I love you, Chris. Nothing personal. 10.14. Every election season, I sat back and I said nothing, but this year, I'm winning. I'm gonna show you how, because I'm gonna expose each and every person that played the little dirty games with the security guard at the door, giving all the moms the flyers, giving their numbers, the Hoboken Foundation jumping in, taking the support in hundreds of thousands of dollars, backing up my opponents, okay? It's going to be questioned this election. And questioning 1014, Munoz is getting almost nine, no, $10,806.76, and every election, they start a page for my opponents. Why do y'all have to cheat to defeat me? It's so funny. I should have been in one of those seats. And this is sad. Each and every agenda up until the election, I will be coming up here, speaking on it. I want to be respected, Madam Chair, President. I'm telling you again, in spite of you being my opponent, y'all bring some integrity back into my district, please, because I got a lot lined up. I got a paper trail. And Dr. Johnson, let me give you another chance. Please don't lie to me, because I'm not going away. I need to get with you and talk to you, because that's the chain of command, okay? These Board members is your boss. Tim is nobody's boss. Tim is a facility director, okay? So I'm gonna tell you again, this matter is serious. Me and my family was inflicted, and everybody as union president that I helped is watching this tonight was impacted, terminated, and hurt. Please, guys, take me serious. Thank you.
Ms. Waiters, the HSEA contract is on here. Item 10.21 is the Memorandum of Agreement between the Hoboken Board of Education and the Hoboken School Employees Association. 10.21. And then item 10.22 is the approval of salary guides for the Hoboken School Employees Association for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2027. So that is the HSEA contract, and if you feel that you would like to speak again on the contract, I'm very open to giving you an additional five minutes to do so, since you hadn't recognized that it was there.
So, our time is now, and y'all should wait.
So let's pause for a minute. Can we show Ms. Waiters the agendas that we have here that show that the contract is on here? Because I want to make sure that this is clear. I think it's important that the membership of this union know that the contract is there. It's on the agenda. You can have mine. So it is on there. I want to make that abundantly clear. Do we have any other speaker? Ms. Good, do we have any other speakers signed up for public portion?
Uh, no, we don't.
Alrighty, we are going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion second. Who made the motion down there? Shella? Thank you.
Alrighty, Ms. Good, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Ms. Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Klupfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We will now move on to comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers signed up this evening?
Ms. Waiters?
This is distinctly for members of the public. Guys, I just want to show you, because there's too many of them. You see this? This is while we're writing on at the meeting. I'm not going to read everything, but what I'm going to read is...I'm missing a debate.
Doesn't start till nine o'clock.
Role of a BOE, Hoboken Public School District's Board of Education, role of a Board of Ed member. The Board of Education consists of nine volunteer members. Three Board members are elected each November for a three-year term. The President and the Vice President are elected by the Board from amongst its members for a one-year term, okay? That's for the presidency. What does...what does your Board do? The Board of Educat...and this is very important. Again, go back to December 4th with Ms. McGurk stressing how important it is to be honest and hold integrity, whether you're running or whether you're on the Board. The Board of Education is the policymaking body. I didn't hear nothing about facility director. Again, let me read that real quick and reiterate. The Board of Education is the policymaking body, which is the nine of you and my dear friend, Vito. Its primary task is to formulate an evaluation of all policies necessary for the operation of the school district. All of y'all ran for office. Did y'all know that? Everybody, right? Yes, we all agree. Okay, for the operation of the school district, your Board of Education is also the legislative branch of the school district. Example of the Board of Education's legal responsibility, including acting upon the administration, is Dr. Johnson, Dr. Christine Johnson, acting upon the recommendations for any appointed and dismissing personnel, adopting an annual budget and formula policies necessary to smooth the operation of the school district. Smooth. Remember smooth sailing is calm, not no hostile work environment on every campus, not being harassed, not being beat up, not being disgusted with what I just went through these two years. I got a paper trail showing you that I cried for help. I cried for help, and I was not given the proper respect and dignity of this. I cried for help, and I was not given the proper respect and dignity of this. And this is a role that all of you took on. You took this role on, and this should be your mission statement, okay? Secondly, and I'm wrapping it up with this one, because they sent it too much. What does the administrator do? This is a good one. The school district is managed by an administrative team, which works with the limits, limits of the board policy. This team is guided by the superintendent, Dr. Christine Johnson, the superintendent of the school's district, who is appointed by the board. So the board supersedes the superintendent. The superintendent sees the facilities, the facilities and her principals, okay? That's how it is. Nobody shouldn't fear nobody. They should hold people accountable. The district appointed by the board. The superintendent serves as the chief executive officer, administrator board policy, administers board policy, and keep the board informed of the needs and programs of the school district. Does the business administrator board secretary that does a phenomenal job. I got to give it to you. I got you, Ms. Good. You've been doing real good. Keep up the good work. Does a phenomenal job. Financial officer and carries out the responsibility introducing all business functions of the school district. And then it got the building supervisor, which is Mr. Calagie, the building director. I'm not going to read that. The building and the district administrators are responsible for planning, coordinating, whatever they take, rent the buildings, and that's their job. With that being said, you guys are all board members. Could we start here into this? Don't, I'm not playing a place to blame, okay? That's not what I'm up here doing.
30 seconds left.
This is asking you nicely. Could we start with this, okay? So then tonight, I would have seen more people instead of still being ignored in the house in the Dari that look like me in this wonderful event tonight, okay? Because they not getting the same resources. They not getting the same attention, y'all. Come on now. Please, I'm asking y'all, I'm pleading that each and every one of you take heed to what I just put on the record. Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
Good evening. My name is Erica Alvarez, 721 Clinton. I'm the current HSEA president. I would like to take a moment and just recognize everyone that was a part of negotiating the memorandum of agreement and salary guides that are on tonight's agenda. As previously mentioned, it passed unanimously, which was amazing. I want to thank the superintendent and the board for working with the HSEA. I also want to thank the other members on our executive board that gave up evenings with their family, along with the superintendent, administrators, and board members to get this accomplished. A special thank you to our NJEA fields rep, Joe Tandey, that assisted us with training and guidance as well. The membership agreed to the MOA and salary guides with a unanimous vote. This is a testament to the integrity of both the board and the association's commitment to reaching a fair agreement. I am proud to be a part of the progress made, and I look forward to working together to further improve our working relationships. I can't thank you all enough for your time and effort to getting this accomplished. Thank you so much. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. We will now be going into a brief executive session for the purpose of discussing matters covered by attorney-client, attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking any actions. We'll just be coming back to close the meeting. We will be approximately 20, 25 minutes. Do I have a motion?
Some motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Good, please call the roll.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira? Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Ms. Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It is 8:44 p.m., and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting? Second? Ms. Norwood. Ms. Good, please call the roll.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira? Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Ms. Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes. And with no further business, is, do I have a motion to conclude this evening's meeting?
Motion to close.
Second? No, no, we were going, it was stated at the beginning of the executive session that we were going into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters covered by attorney-client privilege, and that no action was going to be taken as a result of that discussion. No problem. So I'm going to do that one more time, just to be clear. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a lovely evening.